Calling this meeting to order, City Council Meeting Monday, August 18th, 2025, let's rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick sound check first. Audience, if you can give me a thumbs up if you can hear us well out there. Anybody feeling like we need an adjustment, more volume, let me know. Probably the key thing, council members is just make sure that your microphone is on and that it is relatively close to you when you are speaking. I'm going to ask Ms. Messino to call the roll, please.
Alderman Beebe.
Present.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Present.
Alderman Santiago.
Here.
Alderman Sheehan.
Here.
Alderman Hallett.
Here.
Alderman Carrato Munoz.
Here.
Alderman Demas.
Present.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Present.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Switek.
Here.
Alderman Stout.
Here.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Here.
Alderman Morano.
Here.
Alderman Myers.
We do have a forum. We're going to proceed to our public participation. And the first one that I have this evening is Laura Finch.
Good evening. There's been a lot of discussion lately about the possibility of raising revenue by allowing cannabis dispensaries in West Chicago. So I just want to bring that up tonight. The data tells us pretty clearly that cannabis exacerbates mental health issues. It's likely to increase the risk of developing schizophrenia and other psychoses. The higher the use, the greater the risk. Heavy cannabis users are more likely to report thoughts of suicide than our non-users. And regular cannabis use predicts an increased risk of schizophrenia and of reporting psychotic symptoms. There are also links between cannabis use and social anxiety. These stats are not just from the NIH, but the Canadian government as well. At a personal level, I can also attest to the truth of these statements. A beloved family member started using cannabis while he was a teenager and subsequently developed schizophrenia. If it is determined by the city that cannabis is absolutely necessary for revenue purposes, I would just ask that the council consider the possibility of allowing medical dispensaries only, which is something I don't believe any other town in DuPage has done yet. They all allow medical plus recreational if they allow it at all. So when cannabis is available recreationally, kids do tend to obtain it at an age where it exacerbates those mental health issues, issues that are often not even diarastia. Lastly, in the interest of transparency, I would ask that the minutes for the August 4th, 2025 meeting should be amended to include all comments made by all aldermen. There are a number of us interested and watching the way that you conduct yourselves in these meetings. And I would like the record to reflect exactly what happened so that those examining meeting minutes for the next two years and beyond can have an accurate representation of what has transpired. And as a reminder to all the elected officials here, under the Open Meetings Act, it is perfectly acceptable for you to meet with each other or even just communicate with each other one-on-one. No law prevents this, and it would be a gesture of goodwill and good faith for each of you to agree to meet with your counterparts. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to take just a quick moment to respond because I do see stuff that comes on social media as well, and just wanted to not have people with false expectations. We're not discussing anything related to cannabis tonight. And I understand that that is something that that people feel that there's a lot of important discussion that we could have around it. And I think the only thing that I know of, the only place where it came up in the city recently is that staff asked the city council to give them some direction, whether or not this is something that they wanted more information about or not. And that I'm aware of, that's the only place that it's that it's even come up recently. So I just wanted to let everybody know, you are welcome to share your thoughts for or against. But I saw on social media, hey, there's going to be 50 people showing up to talk about this or that. And I'm not aware that that's happening, but we love to hear your thoughts. So the other thing I wanted to mention that.
And I'm going to say it out here, that was my husband. Thank you. I know he said watching at home, and that's why he didn't show up. So thank you for that.
Good evening. So we also heard from a number of people recently about, I heard personally from maybe about 10 people asking why the minutes didn't reflect some of the conversation between Alderman Hallett and Alderman Carrato Munoz. That has been amended, and we will be reading it into the record when we pass the minutes. So we can do that if someone so motions that we do that. And I know that some of you indicated that you were planning on it. So just wanted to respond to those things. And and thank you, Ms. Finch, for your your comments and your thoughts. And we are going to now ask for, sorry, I have to get my reading glasses now. Mr. Devitt, Tim Devitt.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Apologize, my handwriting is not the best, you know, it's my eyes.
Oh, no, it's my handwriting, trust me. I know, she'll attest. She can't read half the crap. She actually be a doctor, I guess. First, I want to thank everybody. That meeting last Wednesday, phenomenal. Ton of numbers being thrown out, but what I liked about it was the transparency. It showed the residents with the revenue, what the expenses were, where tax dollars are going. And I'll tell you, I've had a lot of numbers. A little surprised about the red light camera thing, especially with iDOT. Why can't somebody just go shake somebody at iDOT and say what the hell is going on? And if we can't get somebody in this thing, trust me, I know how iDOT works. But seriously, it was a lot of numbers, really good information. So I want to thank everybody for doing that. The other thing, two weeks ago, we were, I ran late at work, so we watched via Zoom. And I just have one thing to say. I cannot believe how vile you are, Helen. I'm sorry, the way you talked to her, not just even talking, shaking your pen, talking to her, that's disgusting. I would never talk to a woman that way. I cannot believe that you talked with her. Look, I'll tell you right now, I think you should put your hand over your heart when you say.
I'm just going to remind you that according to our rules, please direct your comments to me.
So as far as I'm concerned, you should put your hand over your heart. But at the end of the day, like he said, we had soldiers that fought in many wars for our freedoms. One of the freedoms is that if you don't want to do that, you don't have to. And my understanding of having somebody that I know that's Jehovah Witness, they're not allowed to pledge allegiance to a fight. So they're not allowed to with their religious beliefs, but their hand over there. But at the end of the day, to do that to a woman, to do that to anybody, another council member, that is just unacceptable. And then to also assume that she's uneducated by asking the questions that were asked, that's just, that's just downright mean. It really is. It's almost like being a bully. So I got to say, think of, oh, one final thing. I thought when you say the pledge of allegiance, you're supposed to look at the flag. What I don't understand is, why was he looking at her?
Thank you, Mr. Devitt. I am going to give, since it was something very personal, if Alderman Hallett wants to give a response at some point, I'll give you the opportunity to do that. Would you like to do that at the end of the public comments, or would you like to respond?
I would just soon do it right now.
Okay.
First of all, I was not disrespectful at all to my fellow aldermen. The reason I brought up the question is it had been brought to my mind by a few, I had thought of it, but never did it. The question was, why does she do this? Everything we do in these chambers is seen by the public, no matter what. And when they have questions, they deserve to be answered. And I tried to be as polite as possible. And whether you're a woman or a man, it makes no difference. When you're in this position, you have to be ready to answer when people have questions. I was not disrespectful in any way. And later I even talked to her and said, if I embarrass you, I'm sorry, I'm not attempting to do that. But don't get in here and jump on me and tell me how disrespectful I was to a woman because I'm not that way to any women. And I try to be respectful to everybody. And you could be respectful to us as well. So often you get up in here and you ram, just rant and rave about different things we do here, not aware of what actually goes on, how much work goes on behind the scenes. And I meant no harm whatsoever.
Mr. Hallett, if I can just say, I think probably turn about us fair play, like direct your comments to the council, just like I asked them to direct their comments to me.
But I'm very offended to even what took place when I finished. The uproar that started here, I thought we were going to have a riot, went on a sleep. And you need to keep these people that are no doubt allies of yours to understand that you don't jump up and yell during the, see, here we go again. And so, yes, I'm answering what took place. But I was in no way disrespectful. I meant no harm. And the next time anybody else asks me a question enough times and it involves somebody here, whether it's people that were here before or people here now, and they want my answers, I'll get the answers one way or another. That's part of our job. Imagine, imagine, for instance, just as an example, suppose when I came in here with no shirt on, somebody, it would be disgusting. It'd be bad behavior. And people would ask about that. I would be someone who would raise the question, why did you do that? I'd have to answer. And that was my only reason for asking the questions that I asked. It wasn't in any way to just do anything, any harm whatsoever. And quite honestly, when you're in a job like this, you have to be, as my father used to say, you have to have leather shoulders because you never know when you're going to hear some bad criticism. It's part of being a political job. So say what you want about me, that's your choice. But I feel I did nothing wrong. I, like I said, I apologize if I embarrassed her. But I don't apologize for carrying out the questions that were put before me.
I think just out of basic fairness, Alderman Carrato Munoz, you don't have to, but if you have anything that you would like to respond, I would be happy to give you a moment to respond as well. Or you can choose to do so later.
I would choose to respond later. I think it's an appropriate moment right now. Yeah.
That's fair. Okay, let's, let's go on. I do have some response, and I'll give my response a little bit later. Santiago.
I have to do with both of those things, so couldn't hear it again. So I had a couple of things. I wanted to bring up a few things. Number one, I know raising taxes seem to be the best fit for the moment to close our shortfall, but long term, I think there may be better choices. One on the table worth looking into is the cannabis dispensaries. We know we now have other neighboring cities enjoying the tax benefits for those citizens. I think it may be worth looking into the pros and cons they have had with the addition of a dispensary to their towns. I just don't see how this should be a no without having actual data at our disposal now compared to years ago when it was new. Number two, the last city council meeting, there was a deliberate attack on one of our council aldermen by another alderman. And it was just such an awful thing to witness. I want Alderman Hallett called out Alderman Munoz for not putting her hand over her heart during a pledge of allegiance. Not only did he call her out on her First Amendment right and freedom, but he never had, even had notes that he, you know, and tried to school her on the flag. This was again deliberate, degrading. It needs to have some kind of repercussion. So this behavior doesn't continue here. I mean, it was just from being out in this audience. I mean, it was just horrendous. I mean, just to be here and witness it was just something that should never have taken place. And number three, after amazing mayor's closing comments, isn't that supposed to be the final say here in the meeting? Or is there, I mean, you said that after the mayor's comments. So I don't, you know, and then we got shushed by it, but there's no way I could have been quiet when somebody attacking another elected official. And he was attacking her. I mean, it was just uncalled for. So.
Thank you. And I will respond to those things a little bit, a little bit later in the evening. I do value the ability to express our feelings, our opinions, our beliefs, even ones that are very important to us, that we feel very strongly about. And I think that our ability to express those things and to have a conversation about it is what sets us apart from governments that do not allow that. And I think that our form of government is much more effective when we are able to have those conversations. And so I respect that, that you, I heard about that moment. I was on vacation. And I heard about it from about 15 people within, you know, 10 minutes of when it happened. I have seen the videos and, and I'll respond. But let me just say that in Alderman Hallett, you feel very strongly and have convictions that you hold very deeply as well. And we're all allowed to express those things. We will talk more about the appropriateness of, of having that discussion in this setting and the way it was a little bit later. But for now, thank you for all for sharing how you guys, how you guys feel about it. We're going to move on to, that's all the public comment that I had. Is there anyone else who, who had wanted to fill out a sheet and did not get a chance? Okay, in the absence of any more public comments, we will move to the city council meeting notes. And as has been mentioned, we would entertain a motion to read into the minutes. I would ask Ms. Messino, if anyone wants to make this motion to read into the minutes, the more complete account, which includes the exchange, as has been mentioned. So does anyone want to make a motion? I saw. Alderman Santiago.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to go ahead and amend the minutes with the additional text conversation.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Okay. I will ask Ms. Messino to read the additional portion of the minutes.
Acting Mayor Avinia Soto called on Alderman Hallett. Alderman Hallett asked Alderman Carrato Munoz why she does not place her hand over her heart during the pledge of allegiance. Alderman Carrato Munoz answered that she did not think he needed her to do that. Alderman Hallett explained that it is done out of respect. He then gave statistics on those who fought for the American flag and asked that she do it out of respect. He asked her if she knew what the stripes meant on the flag, to which Alderman Carrato Munoz answered correctly. He proceeded to explain what the colors meant on the flag. He said this was in no way to embarrass her. Those in the audience shouted out that he was embarrassing her. Attorney Sterk informed everyone that public comment was over, and those that wanted to make a comment could do so at the next city council meeting. Alderman Hallett said he meant no harm to Alderman Carrato Munoz. Alderman Carrato Munoz responded to him saying he could have spoken to her privately, but that she acknowledges that she heard his comment. And that is the end of the addition to the minutes as drafted.
Do we have a motion to, is this discussion, or do you want a motion to accept?
Quick clarification, we got a first and a second, but then we didn't vote on applying those added. I'm not against that, but I've just, we didn't vote to do that. So did we need to do that?
So, so I think the motion was to add this amendment to what was submitted in the, in the written agenda. And I think at this point, having read it, we would take a vote on that if there's no other discussion.
That's what I just was clarifying.
One fine clarification, I believe it was right into the minutes stated that Alderman Avinia Soto was acting mayor. He was actually the chair, not in there.
Correct. He was acting president of the meeting, meaning the one who's presiding over the meeting. Well, let's, let's call the roll.
Alderman Beebe.
Aye.
And I apologize for stepping outside of the usual process. I should have started with Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Hallett.
Aye.
Alderman Carrato Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Demas.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Stout. Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Morano.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next, number six. Discussion and possible action to approve the corporate dispersment report, August 18th, 2025. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Your Honor, I would make a motion to approve in the amount of $1,735,895.30.
Is there a second? Okay, Alderman Switek seconded. Any discussion? Okay. Let's call the roll.
Alderman Demas.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Beebe.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Epstein.
Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Hallett.
Aye.
Alderman Carrato Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto. Alderman Morano.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
That passes as well. Number seven, I'm going to ask our city attorney, Ms. Pepper, if you would please give us a little bit of context around the new procedure for the consent agenda.
Sure. So you remember last time I was here when we got to the part of meeting with the consent agenda, I stopped at one point and said, wait, we're not really doing it right. So the way that it's supposed to happen is that the consent agenda, you establish what's on it, what you want to remove from it, and then you do one vote on all the items. Now, what we were kind of doing was voting in batches. And so what we decided is that it was important to the city council to maintain a portion of that, which is that the aldermen like to read what's on the agenda related to their individual committees. So what we should do, we're going to have a reading of the consent agenda so that we have full transparency and the public knows what's going on. So when we would go through and read it, like we have the development committee, the chair of the development committee would read that. So people will read what they would normally read. Then what we would do is we would make a motion to establish the consent agenda to consider those items. And then that's when we would take off whatever everyone wants to take off. Then what we would do is we have, so once you establish the consent agenda, it has to be established unanimously. Then we have to vote to approve it, which is means that we're approving it on, approving all of the items on there. That does not have to be a unanimous vote. That can either be a simple majority, or if there's something on the consent agenda that requires an extra majority vote, like certain zoning and land use things, then it would have to have a higher vote, but generally it will be a simple majority. Then we will have an agenda item to talk about the items that were removed from the consent agenda. So the only thing that we're really changing is instead, instead of the votes on the little bits as we were doing, which really wasn't a consent agenda, it's going to be one vote on all items after we aldermen read their parts. And then we used to have items not sent to committee, we were adding the things removed from the consent agenda. Now, as you will see on the agenda, item number 10, we have a motion to approve items on the established consent agenda. Or 11 is consideration of items removed from the consent agenda. So this will have us operating in accordance with law, but it still preserves some of the tradition that the council had.
Yes, Alderman Meyer.
Yes. For the items not sent to committee, does, does, who reads off those? Because you said the chair reads off the items from there.
Who used to read those?
The mayor.
The mayor? Okay, so we would still follow that process.
And then does that become, that becomes part of the full consent agenda, or do those items on a separate?
That would still be on the full consent agenda unless they're removed, in which case we handle them at the other section. So with that, if everybody's clear on the procedures, then we can just go through with the, with the reading of it.
Any other questions? All right. So we have which committee are we? Thank you. My glasses broke. Now I have contacts, but I can't see unless I put these on. See, see me going back and forth. I'm getting old. Okay, we have the development committee.
Yes, Your Honor, twice this evening, ordinance number 25, item 8A, ordinance number 25007, ordinance granting an extension for a specialty permit approval for an alternative electric supply facility at 220 press. And item 8B, reservation number 25R0062, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a temporary easement agreement, your pin number 0133300011.
Infrastructure Committee.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, we have 10 items this evening. We have item 8C, resolution number 25R0052, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a revised local public agency engineering services agreement with Gonzalez Companies LLC of Dallas, Dallas, Illinois, for construction engineering services related to the town road reconstruction and resurfacing project in an amount not to exceed $219,361. Item 8D, resolution number 25R0053, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Gilso Landscaping, Inc. for the 2025 Paul Parkway tree planting program in an amount not to exceed $81,660. Item 8E, resolution number 25R0054, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Landscape Material and Firewood Sales, Inc. for the purchase of coarse and fine aggregate material delivered for fiscal year 2025 in an amount not to exceed $61,830. Item 8F, resolution number 25R005, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Alexander Chemical Corp. for the procurement of liquid sodium hydrochloride for fiscal year 2026 in an amount not to exceed $99,416. Item 8G, resolution number 25R0056, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Aetec Inc. for the procurement of liquid carbon dioxide for fiscal year 2025. for the procurement of liquid carbon dioxide for fiscal year 2026 in an amount not to exceed $48,600. Item 8H, resolution number 25R0057, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract, Stewart Spreading, Inc., for the 2025 water treatment plant waste wine sludge removal project. For a base bid in an amount not to exceed $387,240 and reject alternate bid one. With this resolution, it's something to keep in mind, too. Public Works has done a great job figuring out ways to save money. This is yet another way of doing that. This waste sludge is actually sought after by farmers, crops, things like that. So we have found a source, all of these sludge that we have qualifies for utilization of that in the local farm. So not only is it going to be less expensive to dispose it that way, it's going to be safer. It's not going to be a landfill, it's not doing any of that, too. Public Works should be applied for that. Item 8I, resolution number 25R0058, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for the Graymont Western Lime Team for the procurement of hydrate hydrated lime for fiscal year 2026 in an amount not to exceed $392,600. Item 8J, resolution number 25R0059, resolution, a resolution, I assume that's supposed to be authorizing the mayor to execute a construction contract for, for a construction team for Goodfield, Illinois for a amount not to exceed $500,000 for the 2025 sanitary sewer redevolting project. Item 8K, resolution number 25R0060, a resolution authorized the mayor to execute a change order number one with Public City Construction LLC or Bartlett, Illinois for the West Washington Street Soil Removal Project in amount not to exceed $67,967.5 for revised contract value of $647,898.50. This project continues to evolve as we kind of figure out what we're doing over there. So this may continue to change as the city kind of figures out what it is we're going to doing on that site. Item 8L, resolution number 25R0061, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a change order number one with Independent Mechanical Industries of Elkhorn Village, Illinois for the A2O phosphorus removal project at the West Chicago Wind Field Waste Water Authority Regional Waste Water Treatment Plant in an amount not to exceed $105,800 for revised contract amount not to exceed $5,120,800. And I was just about to make the motion for that.
Thank you. And that brings us to our items not sent to committee. Ordinance number 250038, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of West Chicago, Chapter 3, Section 3-12C, decreasing classes of A2 and 1 liquor licenses. And ordinance number 250039, an ordinance establishing a temporary downtown revitalization commission for the city of West Chicago. So at this point, we will ask if anyone wants to remove items. Is there anything that you would like to remove from the consent agenda? Alderman Myers?
I guess I would remove item N, which is the downtown revitalization.
Yeah. Anything else? Well, we will then entertain a motion establishing our consent agenda to include items A through M. Yes, Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Make a motion to approve, to establish the consent, oh, sorry, to approve the items. I'm getting confused now. To approve the items, sorry, no, it's to establish.
Establish, yeah, yeah.
It's going to take us a while to get used to this. I make motion to establish the consent agenda, including item 8A through 8M.
Second. Thank you. And let's call the roll.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman BB.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Hallett.
Aye.
Alderman Carrito Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Demas.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Morano.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to 10. Motion to approve items on the established consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Alderman Avinia Soto.
I have a motion to approve the items and establish consent again.
Okay, ten seconds. Alderman Stout. Thank you. Let's call her.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman BB.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Hallett.
Aye.
Alderman Carrito Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Demas.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Morano.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
That carries. That brings us to 11, which will be consideration of items removed from the consent agenda. Alderman Myers.
Move to approve the ordinance 250039, an ordinance establishing a very downtown revitalization commission for the city of West Chicago.
Is there a second? Alderman BB? Any comment? Alderman Myers?
Yeah, I did, I didn't remove it because I disapproved of it, but I wanted to just also test out our new consent agenda. And I also wanted to I also wanted to kind of talk about it a little bit more. It's a pretty big deal. There's one, one of plans for downtown revitalization. And some of the contents of this is to create a commission that has nine members. So there'll be three city officials, three residents of the city at large, two members of the business community, and one undefined stakeholder. And the purpose is to have a focus group that is going to interact with staff and with community and with our engineering services provider to really kind of make sure that the, the plan for deep downtown revitalization includes the right kind of feedback. And that's kind of the purpose of it. So the, the point is it'll be every, every month. And we'll have a representative or two, two city staff members as representatives. So we kind of have the combination of staff, elected official, elected officials, residents, and really kind of like make sure everybody's voice is heard.
Any other comment? Alderman Avinia Soto?
In case of approving this commission, who gets to, who from the other men are allowed to, to join in the commission? It's like that by volunteering or somebody said, that wasn't.
It's appointed by the mayor with the advising consent of the city council.
Any other comment? Alderman BB?
I, I guess I'd just kind of like to join in here, too. I'm not opposed to this. I've lived in Ward 1 since 1990. I've seen plans come and go. I've seen a lot of developers come in with great plans pull out because of financial reasons, slowdowns in the economy, recessions. I hope that won't happen to us again here, but I really like this idea of bringing the community in, bringing in business leaders, extending that group out to, to not just be this council, but to extend other people, other people in the community to, to give their input. So I'm, I'm really in favor of this.
They're coming. Well, I'll just say that this is, this is the thing I was excited about tonight. This is, this is the thing that got me excited about coming here and we are attempting to, in every way, bring the community in from the ground floor on these processes. And this is part of that as well. We've seen, we talked about it already tonight, how social media can present some interesting challenges, and it can also be a really effective communication tool. And so probably a lot of you have seen some of the pictures that I posted. And those, those pictures, just to reiterate, the idea was to, to generate discussion among the community from the ground floor and say, hey, we're not going to bring this to you when it's a done deal. We're going to bring it to you from the beginning and get your input from the ground floor up, and then we're going to go through all the processes that we need to, 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 to make this happen. But I am, I am super excited about having a group that's just focused on revitalization of our downtown and that is kind of a clearinghouse for all the different ideas and agencies that would need to be involved and pulling in the same direction to make something like this, make something like this effective. So, thank you. There's no other comment. We'll call the roll. Okay.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Alderman BB.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Hallett.
Aye.
Alderman Carrito Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Demas.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Morano.
Aye.
Motion carries. Reports by committee. Committee Chairperson Demas.
Yes, nothing from the finance committee of the session.
Thank you.
Nothing else from the board in this time.
You. Chair was out.
Yeah, I mean, we had a lot of agenda items today, but a lot of stuff just kind of stuck me up, getting all the materials and things that we need to be ready for another successful year in 2026. So I think most of all of our road projects are wrapped up at this point, mostly. So keep close. Things on time, under budget, always good, right?
Thank you. Okay. There's nothing else. We will proceed to unfinished business number 11. This is still on the table. Item A, if we want to talk about it, it would need to be taken off the table.
13.
Just, yeah, what, what did I say? Oh, yeah, sorry.
You can't re.
Brain, yeah, put my glasses back on. This is my excuse for everything now. If I get it wrong, it was the glasses. Alderman Morano?
Yeah, so we're good to discussing this.
Um, so do we need to take a, have a motion to take it off the table in a second, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. Like to make a motion to remove 13A from table.
Okay. Is there a second? Alderman Demas. Okay, discussion.
Well, we, we need to vote on that, but it can be a voice vote. It doesn't have to be real call.
Okay, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Okay.
This is just for.
To take it off of the table, yes.
Alderman Morano.
Aye.
Alderman Demas.
Aye.
Alderman BB.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Hallett.
Aye.
Alderman Carrito Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Okay, any discussion? Alderman.
Yeah, so I know there have been discussions, I think, over the last couple of months here regarding this. And I, I think most of us are on board with the idea of it. It was just kind of fine tuned what the ordinance looked like. So a couple of things that have been brought up was the the cap on it at a thousand dollars a month, I think, just kind of looking at attorney fees and the things that we see kind of on a weekly basis here. If that could be bumped, I mean, a thousand dollars could be spent in a singular meeting with our attorney. So I, I think that it would be good to, to raise that, my idea. Again, I'm not talking about $10,000, but three. I think was a, is a fair number for it to be at to get something done from a legislative council standpoint. We could take things one at a time where I can keep going.
So that is, that's, you're talking about the last sentence in section two?
That's correct.
So, so you're proposing to increase that to 3,000 per month? One alternative that you can do is an overall annual cap, if you think that would work better, too.
And, and I'm open to either. In fact, I mean, annual cap might even be a better idea. Just because if it's the, the idea behind legislative councils, it would be a singular event that would happen where, you know, we might need a lot of help within maybe a six week period, but not need them for the rest of the year. So, yeah, I mean, whatever, you know, we do 36,000 annually, I guess would be the same as 3,001, but I'm good with that, too.
Yeah, let's take a comment. Any other comment on, on that? And then we can keep going. Alderman Myers?
Yeah, I guess my good thing is I don't know that there's urgency for this right now. I feel like if we, we need this, we can, we can pass it, but we've gone for like over 100 years without legislative council. I know there's been a lot of like crazy things that have been happening recently that kind of imply that we, we could potentially use it. But I, I'm a little nervous to put this into our code, to say like, you know, for the rest of the, the existence of the city of West Chicago, this is going to be on our codebooks.
Alderman. Alderman Morano?
Yeah.
The glasses.
Yeah. In addition to the, to the bumping up, you know, the, the dollar amount, just so it makes sense. Because at a thousand dollars, I'd say let's just not do it, we're done. I mean, it's kind of silly. But I'd also like to put some more teeth in it, where, you know, not a singular person could just reach out and say, well, I've declared that we need legislative council. I'm going to vote $36,000 on legislative council over the next three weeks. I don't think that's the way we should do it either. I think that, you know, we should establish maybe a certain amount of, and then that should decide that it was necessary. I don't think we need a majority for that, but, you know, more than one, I think is, is a better idea.
I got it. Yes, Alderman.
I would agree with Alderman Morano. It's something we've talked about a number of times, and if we were going to do it, doing it at the thousand, it doesn't really make any sense, not at what attorneys thought. So I think that Morano's saying just makes common sense.
Again, the
Alderman Morano?
The hope is that we don't use it at all. I think we've had, absolutely, it's my guess that they've been, I guess, we're legislative council for a long.
Since, since 1995.
And how many times were you used?
Three.
Three. That's the hope, too, right, is that we don't need it. And when we do, and those were occasions that we've started to use.
The other thing is, if you pass this right now, there isn't anything on the agenda to appoint anybody to serve it. So you could have this on the agenda, and then should you have a need, make a motion to appoint someone when that need arises.
Alderman Myers?
I not everyone would call me a small government person, but in this case, I, I just feel like having extra, extra codes on the book just in case. I mean, it, it seems like overkill. Obviously, I, I don't think we should put it on there until we say, okay, this is the event that we needed. Let's, let's do this. And at this point in time, I'm not aware of it.
Any other color? Alderman.
I am going to side with Alderman Myers. Do we need this now? Um, we're trying to figure out our budget. You're trying to figure out something here and if we don't need this, if, if there wasn't a precedent, I guess when we need it, can we vote for it then? Can we acquire it then? When we need it, not now.
I can't, this is really both sides. I don't think we should wait till it gets needed, but I don't think like we should pay for, like, holding for like a year. We only need it for a month. I agree with that to them. Per year, we only need it for a month, I agree with that to them. I feel like. If the, he came up already, so. It's an ask to like have like a guideline that we can already amend to the codes. Or like make the codes, or like in case that happens, we already kind of have like those guidelines to, to go to. And they just have to be excited, like, we should do something about it, so in case. That'll ha- that'll happen in the future. This is likely that it's gonna happen, that it's not gonna happen. We should have some kind of like, based on our experience, like, because it happens to, like, our city council. Uh, we should do something about it and like have it on the table. And, uh, just make it like, put in more thinking on it.
Alderman Davis.
Uh, just to get a clarification, um, we approve this ordinance does not mean we are necessarily going to be paying somebody. Right out of the books, it's only if we need them, so having it available for use. I think is just prudent for us to just have it, and as our attorney has stated. They've only been used of, what, three times and over however many years it's been, um, I'm hoping we never use it as well, but it doesn't hurt habit. And it's not like we're paying for anything with having it on.
It costs us.
Yeah, Alderman Beebe.
I guess to Alderman Moreno's point, you know, a certain number of, of aldermen actually needing to. Approve. Actually hiring a legislative council, is that actually required, because in order for us, if we, if we pass this. We have it on the books, it's, it's in ordinance. We would need a majority of this council to actually hire an attorney into this role. So do we actually need to have something written into the code to, 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 to do that, if, if that was the route we took, I know when you talk, you have that option on the table, so.
Alderman Moreno.
Yeah, so my thought process around that was, is that we would establish this ordinance, um, again, kind of. Put it together in a, in a way that makes a little bit more sense, um, for all of us, and then. Um, it, again, potentially have. Uh, a firm that, that we would be using, but the only way that we, the reason behind having multiple aldermen that would have to agree to it would. Um, eliminate. The, not the ease of access, but the, the potential abuse of a second attorney to Alderman Myers, point the redundancy in it. Um, we would just have a singular alderman that would be able to just continue to go to, um, a, a second attorney. Um, for whatever reason they felt needed, this would kind of put some more checks and balances in multiple, and again, I don't know what that number is. I, I think at least three, I think is probably a good number, um, but had a multiple alderman that would agree that it should be used.
Yes.
So actually, both of, both of your comments are correct. Normally, once you establish the ordinance, then you would appoint somebody to be legislative council, that would require a majority vote. But then, once you have them, they are legislative council, and what are the procedures for using them? Because what if you have a couple of questions in one year, so. If, if you want a process, it's pretty common to have some kind of standard for when they would be used. So you don't just have everyone that has a question calling them.
So from my perspective, there's kind of three. Primary issues. Uh, and as I said, going way back, uh, few months back, uh, this was part of the. Initial compromise agreement, and I would not oppose the creation of this, uh, of this office, and I will not. Uh, my questions, so you guys have already raised two of them, one is the, the triggering mechanism, for lack of a better word. Um, two is the cap. Uh, of what can be spent. To me, the most important question, or the most important consideration. Um, to your point, Alder Moreno, that you just said, is to prevent abuse of it. Um, let's say fifteen years from now, we have this on the books. And we have someone that just wants to use it as a, uh, second opinion, because they don't like the. Uh, what they are hearing, and that's. That's my one suggestion. Would maybe to be, to tighten up, I think it's number, number one, where it talks about their responsibilities.
Number two.
Number.
One and two.
Yeah. I, I, I guess I, I would question whether we need number two, or if that might just. Add a little bit more room for people to abuse it. Uh, since the, the purpose of it is to advise specifically. In, in, in these, these areas of, um. Sorry. Need the glasses. Um, I'll just read what I'm saying, uh, there's, there's one, there's two, uh, basically. Uh, purposes, duties, uh, one to advise the city council regarding issues involving the legislative duties. Its legislative duties, and two, to provide opinions on the powers of the legislative branch. And provide advice on matters within the purview of the legislative branch of municipal government. Um, the legislative council shall not replace or usurp the powers of the corporation council. See, this is why it's important I put the glasses on, number two is the one I like, number two is the one, number one is the one I feel like could be used. To kind of, uh, you know, expand into other, into other areas, so. That's my, that's, that's kind of my, my, um. Question for you guys is, what about, uh, removing number one on the duties? And then, this is just kind of a question for Alderman Moreno, uh, your, your, I, your thought about, okay, if you have one issue. And you're stuck with a thousand dollars a month, and, but you have questions that require four hours or five hours, and you're kind of stuck. I mean, what if it was the yearly thing, but if it was twelve thousand? And then, if you need more than that, you can always go back and ask for more. Uh, it, it's just a, a question, how would you feel about that, particularly since we're kind of in this whole question. Simultaneously, where, where do we find four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars that we're losing in, in revenue from the, uh. From the grocery tax? What thoughts on that?
Um, yeah, so I think, um, I, I guess my questions would be if. If it, we did exceed that, again, the hope is that we use zero dollars, but if we did exceed that, um, let's say, in, in a shorter period of time than, than a year, right? We needed more money than that, going back to the council, so this would. Um, this would be outside of the ordinance allowable amounts, would we be changing the ordinance then to match the amount that would be requested? Or would we just be able to ask for a certain amount even though it's outside of the allowable drop in the ordinance?
What I was envisioning is that you would have basically this, this triggering mechanism, whether it's three, or whether it's five aldermen that ask for it. That's a lower threshold, and that, with, with that lower number, you can tap into the twelve thousand dollars annually. If you need to go above that, then it requires you have a, a meet a higher threshold, which is the majority of the council saying we need more money. That kind of protects a minority group from just being squashed. But if the entire council feels that they need more legal counsel, they have the mechanism to do that.
Yeah, and then would it be written into the ordinance then that way?
Yeah, we can, whatever the group agrees on, we can amend to put in there.
Yeah, yeah, just, um, going back to your point on number one, could we just amend that to say, to advise the city council regarding issues involving its legislative duties? When three or more aldermen require that, or is that? Kind of that, I, I'm just a statement, put it in there, okay, that was just something.
Do you guys like three, do you guys like five? Four. Going once.
I just, I get the.
Hold up how many fingers you would like to see it be, it's just informal thing, let me, let me, let me see, just, just put up how many fingers you would like to see it be. It's just kind of helpful to.
Okay, four point seven eight is the average.
Yeah. This is a very scientific process, just so you know, no, but it, it was actually helpful, because there were some threes, there were some fives, there was a six. Uh, so, I, I, I think.
Can I, can I, can I, why behind like the number?
Sure.
Like for like. For the people who like raise their, their. Oh, I see six, uh, based on the. How many words we have, so. Six aldermen will, that will be like, at least three. Words, three districts will be agreeing with. Or disagree with the majority of the other. So I mean, it's like. Like my, my district and your district, like, say, maybe seven, six, and five, I disagree with the rest of them. We are at least gonna have. That number. Like to, to use the, uh, legislative. Council, yes. Like based on like what the, the, the city wants to.
All right, uh, I think at this point, like, I would entertain a motion, either to. Uh, ask, uh, for the rewriting with a. Specific number of things, um, or if you want to attempt to just. Uh, uh, read, read your amendments into the record, and we can vote on that, uh. But I, it seems at this point, let's, um, let's, let's take a motion, Alderman Moreno.
Um, yes, so, I think I've got some compromise ideas, so I'll, I'll read it, if you say no. Um, so, I would like to. Um, pass ordinance number twenty five oh zero zero two four, with the amendments of. Um, and. Annual amount, uh, not to exceed twenty four thousand, I came to that number, could we set a thousand, well, I said three, I said one. So twenty four thousand puts us at about two thousand a month. Um, and let's say, uh, five council members agree. Um, for the utilization, again, same thing, I said three, I think I heard six and five, all that, so, um. Up to five members would have to authorize to use it, um, the triggered method would be the, the five numbers. Um, and I think that's.
Anything on the duties?
Um. I, I guess, I don't, I'm, I'm indifferent as far as that goes, but that doesn't seem really bothering me, one way or the other, having one or two. I, obviously, I think two is the, the primary bulk of what it'll be used for.
Are you, are, is your motion that it be sent back to, uh, city staff to be rewritten and brought next meeting, or is your motion to be voted?
If we could pass it today, this has been tabled, you know, a couple of times, we've been carrying it for a while, if we could pass it tonight, that'd be great.
We probably need you to read that one more time, then, for the sake of our.
So I think, so I, if I could there.
Yes.
So what we would do, I believe you want to amend this, and on page two on the back, one, it says to advise the city council regarding issues involving its legislative duties. And then, as Alderman Dimas suggested, when five alderpersons agree that it is desirable to use legislative council, we'd add. And then, the bottom of two, where it says a cap not to exceed a thousand per month, would be twenty four thousand per year.
Right. Can I just take a, an informal straw poll on the duties sections? Um, uh. I'm gonna ask you guys to raise your hand if you would be in favor of removing section one. And then I'll ask you to raise your hand if you'd be in, in favor of retaining section one.
Will we read section one again?
Would you please read it for us?
All right, so it says legislative council shall have the following duties, one, to advise the city council regarding issues involving its legislative duties. That's one. And if we take that part out, we would move the, the five person requirement probably down to the second paragraph.
Okay, so, um. Question or clarification?
Yeah, clarification, so if we, if we, uh, say that it takes, uh, five aldermen to, uh. To trade her, then that would apply to both one and two, if one is still present.
Yes.
If one is still present.
Yes.
I'll, I'll remember.
The idea with the five aldermen would be for, a- any and all reasons that legislative council abuse would be allowable unless five aldermen agree. That legislative council was necessary.
Okay.
That makes sense. What's that?
I think I, I said it out loud.
I, I said three originally, but, uh, when I read some parity numbers, I figured a good compromise was around five.
That, I'll, I'll tell you the reason I, well, I was, I, I put it out as a query to the group, how do you feel about five? And the reason that that number, um, came to my mind is that, uh, super majority is two thirds. So I was thinking, okay, micro majority might be one third. That wasn't any more scientific than that. Okay, uh, if you would be in favor of, uh, removing. Item number one under duties, raise your hand. If you'd be in favor of retaining. Item number one under duties, raise your hand. Okay. So Alderman Moreno, would you please reread or re, uh, would you please read your motion? Uh, into the minutes for us?
Um, yeah. So I moved to approve ordinance number thirteen, oh, oh, sorry, it'll be IM thirteen eight, ordinance number twenty five oh zero zero two four. Ordinance of the city of West Chicago amending the city code related to legal services. With the amendments that would include, um, five aldermen to trigger the use of legislative council. As well as increasing the, um. Cap to twenty five, four thousand annually versus, uh, one thousand.
And would it be appropriate to say, with any. Uh, grammatical or legal editing by our.
Sure.
By our legal.
Yes.
Okay, is there a second? Alderman Stow. All, let's, 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 uh, call the roll.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Stow. Alderman Beebe.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Hallett.
Aye.
Alderman Correto Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Hey.
Motion carries, thank you, uh, number fourteen, new business. Um. Great, uh, I'm going to. Ask at this point if Ms. Chrissy will come and. Uh, give us some context regarding our strategic priorities discussion.
Thank you, good evening, everyone, um, so. Been hearing a, a little bit from the budget discussion, as well as even tonight, how to identify priorities for not only resource allocation from a. Financial standpoint, but also from, uh, personnel and staffing support. In terms of the initiatives that the city pursues, and so I thought I would take a stab. At some strategic priorities, these are assembled from many of our prior. Uh, planning efforts, as well as some of the comments that we've heard from the elected officials, as well as the community. And so the idea would be that we could use these priorities to then develop work plans. And then to be able to assist in the budgeting process for you. And I will say that, while. Many of these ideas are not necessarily new, the, uh, idea to be able to really focus our efforts on these. Key priorities is something that is for your consideration tonight. Um, so, for the benefit of everybody in the room, I will also read the, there's only five, uh, revitalizing downtown. Uh, lead the transformation of downtown West Chicago into a dynamic, inclusive, and economically vibrant district. That reflects community pride and attracts investment. Delivering exceptional and transparent services, deliver high quality, accessible, and accountable municipal services that reflect. Community needs, build trust, and enhance operational efficiency through innovation and continuous improvement. Connecting the community, foster connections between people, places, and opportunities. Strengthening relationships, expanding access, and building inclusive networks through both physical infrastructure. And collaborative partnerships. Elevating culture and community identity. Celebrate West Chicago's diversity, heritage, and creative spirit to strengthen our shared identity. And foster a vibrant cultural landscape that promotes belonging and civic pride. And then investing in our future. Build a stronger, more resilient West Chicago by investing in infrastructure, economic growth. And workforce development to ensure long-term prosperity for all. Um, the idea would be that this council, uh, would adopt priorities, whether they be this. Um, the idea would be that this council uh would adopt priorities, whether they be this or others. This is up for discussion, um, and really sort of a starting point, but um. For a two-year time period just for this particular council. Um, this will help all of us to move in the, in the same direction and align our efforts to make really meaningful impact within the community. Um, as I mentioned, this, you know, should the city council agree on these priorities? These can then um start to then develop. I know from an economic development commission standpoint, we typically want to adopt a work plan. And so these priorities then will inform what types of activities from an economic development perspective we can then pursue. Based on using this as a framework. So I'm, I'm hopeful to um get some feedback and to understand if this is in line with the council's anticipated direction.
Well, I would suggest that um we open up for any initial questions. And uh then perhaps we uh. Uh, after tonight's um distribute this uh. Both, I, I, I'm assuming that the, the council members uh have already or will. Get this uh in writing in some format and, and then community wide as well. And um, uh, after some initial questions tonight, um, I would suggest that we then give, give feedback. On this and then, and then a, a resolution on, on a, on a, on a, on a future council meeting night. Questions? Yes, Alderman Myers.
Yes, uh, I, I like these a lot, I think this is exactly what uh. Seems like the, the city needs, uh, my only question is kind of the, the opposite, which is like. What's an example of something that we might have undertaken? That we wouldn't because it doesn't fit twice five priorities, like. It feels like, like everything that we would want to do is, is these five things, but like. You know, we're talking about prioritizing things that usually means that something fall off the priority list. So like, what are some things that would maybe not be covered by this?
Um, you know, we, we. I'm not exactly sure what wouldn't be covered by it, but I think that the. Because I wasn't looking at it that way, so I might have to get that, but, um, you know, we. There are lots of efforts and initiatives that are called out in some of our existing plans. So one thing, for example, that might not fit into this framework. Might be um sort of health initiatives that are identified in the comprehensive plan, for example. That might not be something that based on this framework that we would perhaps prioritize. If these were uh adopted by the city council. But I think I could go back and look.
And, and this is why I think, yeah, this is helpful dialogue and maybe get back to us on that because. I think it's a great question, that's how I think, um, I, I would drive professors crazy asking, what does this not mean? And uh, some of us are geared to, to learn in that way, um, but uh. I, I'd love to hear the answer to that question, too.
Yeah, I think that uh, I mean, our, our past like comprehensive plans had, had like, I don't know, hundred eighty points on there, something like that. So maybe kind of uh saying which of those hundred eighty things like does not fall into this category. Uh, would be helpful just to, like, like I said, it's, it's not clear to me. I mean, these are, you said, sound awesome, but I don't know what the other side of it is, like, what are we saying we're not gonna do?
And to say that something is not a priority, does not mean that it is not important or that we don't care about it, by, but priority, prioritization. By nature of what it is, is to say, we're gonna put this ahead of this.
Yeah, I mean, like.
And if.
One of these five things comes up and then like for another thing that's not on this list, like, we're gonna pick that thing that's on the list. So what is like that, I, I don't know.
I think I saw Alderman Moreno, where, I saw a hand over there somewhere.
Um, yeah, no, I, I was, I didn't really have a question, I, I think that those are five great things to Alderman Myers' point, I think, but. They, they hit a lot of the things that we're, I think we all already prioritize a little bit, but now speaking of our paper. And agreeing to it gives me all the same page with it, it's good.
Do, do all of these have like a figure, dollar amount associated to them?
They do not. It is intended to help in terms of the council's decision-making process while evaluating. Budget requests and or initiatives to be undertaken, that type of thing. So those would all have individual budget amounts associated with them, but these as stra- strategic priorities do not.
And I think part of it is, I mean, as mayor, I do have a little bit of a unique role and benefit in that I'm kind of a little bit of a hybrid. Staff member slash community member, so I get to be here uh in the building more than the rest of you. And I think part of this is helpful in that, like, I can have a conversation with. Um, uh, Ms. Chrissy. A- and say, hey, let's do this, let's do that, let's do that, but this is kind of an attempt to get us all pulling in the same. Direction and get sort of a unified statement from the, the council on what, what our, what our priorities are so that. So that staff really feels like it's, they've had clear communication on what we're expecting. Is that a fair statement?
It is.
Yes.
Where, where does? The commission? That we've just established with the or previous ordinance and. Well, I mean. Are we like double upping on things? Or then does this need to be done, seeing that we created that?
Si- seems like it clearly fall, would fall as it's currently stated under number one.
Yeah. Pretty much.
No, I'm saying.
Are you saying, like, why, like, like, why, why do we have to raise this first and then, and then the commission versus like?
Why, is it, isn't this, is it part of the, should be part of the commissions?
I think if we're.
Part of the cities.
Yes, well, the city.
The city is.
Yes, well, if we were, if we were starting a city from scratch, brand new. And said, oh, hey, then, then we would do that first. And then we'll do everything else, as it is, we have a hundred and fifty years of history, and so it's kind of a constant cycle. Of relooking at priorities and trying to realign our efforts and services and so forth to those priorities. So it's just kind of that continuing process is what I would say.
And it's gonna still be the city, or the, the, the councils. Who's gonna direct, what is at the top and what keeps falling to the bottom as we, okay?
This group.
Okay.
That's why, that's why we're talking about.
Very good, very good.
Um, I really like learning about this today. Uh, it seems like the. The ground, the basis of. Being able to, um. Build together our town, um. I also, every, I, I talk to people and also I, it has raised to me, I love. The West Chicago's intention to celebrate diversity, heritage and what that says. Um. I would love to see, you know, we, we are majority Latino, but also there are other ethnic backgrounds. I've learned about throughout the years about the uh sister cities. About, you know, our, our German folks, Irish. Um, that we could, um. Maybe learn a little more about each other. So there, there's just something that can, that we can connect. Um, everybody in West Chicago together. Because this, this would uh. The civic pride and it promotes, yes, that we all belong in West Chicago. That we all belong here as neighbor. So I, I love this, I love this, thank you, Kevin.
Can I, can I suggest that perhaps we um. Choose a timeframe, four weeks, six weeks, and ask for kind of uh written responses. Both from council members as well as the community um. To this. Uh. To this uh iteration of, of our statement of priorities and that we.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, it, um. Ms. Wasiro is, is saying that it might be helpful to, to just ask. About the economic development timeline and how, like, what specific. Um, deadlines that you have that you're looking to have this guidance on?
Well, um. The Economic Development Commission meets four times a year, um, it's typically quarterly, we did push off our last meeting in the hopes that we would be able to. Um. Get some initial feedback for the strategic priorities here as this then would be the basis for our work plan, which also. Formulates our budget request from an economic development standpoint. Um, and so these, as I mentioned, are not necessarily new ideas or priorities, but really just. Trying to get some sort of direction as to, are we on the right track? Is this generally in keeping with what we want to do? Because then we can start filling in those initiatives and efforts that will help us to achieve those, these priorities. Um, but if there is a desire to, you know, um workshop this more, we certainly could do that. It would have an impact then on our economic development plan, which then does feed into our budget request.
Do you have a, do you have calendar right now and next uh economic development committee meeting?
Next Tuesday.
So, um, yeah, I would love to, I would love, I would love for you guys to have some. Sense of clarity from the council, but at the same time for it to be really meaningful, like, I'd love to give everybody a chance to kind of absorb it. And give feedback. Do you need to have something that is? A, uh, for it to be helpful, do you need to have something that is in ordinance form?
No, not at all, really, we're just looking for some feedback as to, are we on the right track? Does this make sense based on everything that has been discussed in the um. Uh, expectations for moving things forward? If there is something that is not in keeping with that, we can certainly eliminate that and then come back and, and circle back. Um. But really just looking for some discussion.
So perhaps I might suggest, because I've had a little more time to absorb this because of conversations, but. Um, you know, we may have just read this specific document, you know, three, four days ago. Um. Maybe what we could do is, is just give some informal um comment here, um, I mean, I, I for one. Um, you know, I, I like the tra- trajectory of where this is headed. Um, and I think that in the ensuing four weeks. At, if, if there is input, feedback, then that could perhaps be brought and it could, it could be specific items that we could. That we could talk about if someone says, you know, if there's a, if, if there's a large movement that, hey, I really wanna. Remove this one, I don't think we should have exceptional transparency, then maybe that comes back to this group, I'm being facetious. But maybe that comes back to this group for some more discussion, but maybe at least tonight we could give some. Sense of informal, you know, yeah, that's, that, that's great. So, yes.
I'll, I'll say from my perspective, I liked everything I heard, I think it was definitely on the right track.
Yeah, Alderman Stout.
You know, I would agree with that, I think that, uh, you've captured, um. A lot of what we've all been striving for in the revitalization of the downtown and. I think that this is definitely going in the right direction.
Yes, Alderman Dimas.
Yeah, I would agree, um, I think, um, especially if you have your uh meeting this next Tuesday. Um, that I would say that with what you have now would be a good direction to start working towards, it would be what I. Yeah.
Any other thoughts, yes, Alderman Bibi.
I, I think that anybody sitting in this chamber right now that doesn't like one of these has a problem with me. Uh. No, I, I think this hit to the heart of, of, of the last election cycle, I think these even, you know, a lot of these, nothing, a lot of these aren't new. They're maybe reimagined a little bit, they're maybe reworked a little bit, but these are things that the city has been striving for, for decades. Um, maybe not always hitting the mark, but has been trying to achieve. Obviously, we've got a lot of plans, we've done strategic plans, downtown, you know, redevelopment plans, expensive consults, the city's paid a lot of money for. Um, and made a great investment in it, I'm assuming that these will be used to kind of cherry pick things out of there that fit to these priorities, much to your point, Alderman Myers. The, the items that actually fit in here will be elevated to the top, and we'll try to actually get some of those things done. Personally, I think one of my disappointments uh in the city overall, not me, given member of this body or, or anybody in staff. Is we've, we created those plans and yet so much of what's in those plans has not been realized. We, we haven't been checking off boxes on those things, and I think this will go a long way towards focusing us on getting a few of those things done and starting to check things off the list. So, thank you.
And I would just say that one thing uh that I've appreciated. Um. That Ms. Chrissy has done that, I don't know if it's been done before, maybe it has, but I'm not aware of it, is. Uh, going back through, um, I think five of. But maybe probably more consulting with more, but at least going back through five of those. Different documents that are strategic plans and downtown development, uh, you know, consultants that we hired. And then attempting to um put those together in one essentially. Um. List to guide things checklist type of thing, so um, I agree with that. I think that's, I think that's, I think that's helpful and that's one of the things we've talked about with this. Um, new downtown redevelopment commission, that one of the first things that I think that they should do is. Look at all these. Documents that we've paid a lot for from consultants, go back through and make sure that we understand them. Go out and get community input and then try to put those two things together, so. This is, this is the kind of thing that we want to do. Final thoughts? Okay, we're not, um. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, there, uh, this, but leave it aware of it, it's missing from this, that would prevent us from moving forward on this thing.
Yes, I, I was just about to add another new business, because in general, this is, how are we connecting to the community, like? Are, like, us.
You mean point three, the?
The elected officials, how are we, like, how do we connect with the people that we represent? The, those influence, how can they give us feedback on like all this stuff? I know, like, we try and sometimes they're like, people don't reach out to us for whatever reason, you know? If we reach out also as a elected official, sometimes they're like, they don't respond either, because uh, you know, like, people usually, usually want to. Participate in government and, uh, pretty affects everybody, like. I would like, uh, the question is like, how, or is there a way for us to connect with other people? Or like, people do contact us in a, in a faster way than emails or, or like, kind of like personally, I don't know, I was suggesting like apps or a. I don't know. Uh, websites probably.
That, that number three uh was the one that talks about connecting our community and, I mean, I kind of like to think about that as. Um, making sure that everybody in our community has a seat at the table and a voice and, um. Uh, yes, we could probably spend a lot of time discussing. How that would play out and how we as elected officials could uh do a better job with that and. Um, you know. Those would be good discussions, Alderman Myers?
Yeah, I just want to say, like, uh, just to kind of connect, like, what Alderman, uh, uh, you know, sort of was talking about. Uh, to like. to like the numbers and what you're talking about as far as budget. If it comes up in the budgeting process, like we need a certain amount of money for an app that will let us connect to the community, then that, that's what this is about. It's about saying, okay, that bubbles to the top because that falls underneath one of these categories.
And there is one. And there is one. It was mentioned in our finance workshop. Okay, thank you. Any closing comments or?
I appreciate the feedback very much and look forward to making some significant progress here.
Thank you so much. And I will say again, just to the community that when you have time to absorb that as well as city council, feel free to send feedback. I said this in our workshop, city council meeting, town hall and finances, I said, hey, reach out to me if you have thoughts on this. And a bunch of you from the community emailed me specific thoughts about the finances. And I have read all of those and we'll be responding, but I just, I want to say that does matter when you guys do that. So absorb this, feel free to reach out with questions or feedback on this, which reach out to your alderman, reach out to me. You can find all of our emails on our website. So, and phone numbers. All right. One more item of new business. We have B authorization to pay legal bills associated with transition for a period of May, for the period of May 1st, 2025 to August 1st, 2025. Bond Conway Law Firm Limited, sixty one thousand, six hundred and twenty nine dollars and twenty cents. Ansel Glink, eleven thousand, three hundred and eighty two dollars and twenty five cents. Law offices of Jeffrey Jacobson, thirteen thousand, eight hundred ninety three dollars and ninety cents. I would entertain a motion to adopt this. And if there's a second, then we're going to have discussion. Alderman Moreno? Okay, second. Thank you. Discussion. Oliver Myers?
A question about for the Bond Conway item zero one five four two zero one says legislative. And there's a current balance of fourteen thousand five. One to thirty day balance of fifteen thousand eight hundred sixty five. So it's thirty one thousand, five hundred fifty dollars for one word. Do we have any more details or is this like, like looking back through past bills, like that's not like a typical amount? So I would like more details.
Yes, I will. I don't believe we do have more detail. We could request it.
Well, we have, we have the itemized bills from them. I think that well, part of it was there was the litigation between the mayor's attorney and the the former city attorney.
I think he is looking at the itemization and it has thirty one thousand dollars that's just listed as legislative.
Just legislative. And thirty, thirty one thousand dollars.
No, based on our discussion, I had done the cover pages, but not the subsequent pages.
We do have that. We just haven't passed it out to anyone. It goes, they, they bill, you know, by the increment in all their services. We have the background data. She just didn't prepare it for the council.
Typically, when we're sharing our legal invoices, we usually only do the cover page and then redact it. So I was following a similar process for what I had available based on theirs. They had a cover page.
So we did go back and request a detailed detailed accounting because you're right, that has not typically been provided by Bond Conway Associates.
No, I believe, I believe they did give us a bunch of detail and they normally do. But what the council has, what, what the administration has given you has been the cover sheets.
I have all of the invoices for the last eight years from Bond Conway. And they have never told us how many hours they worked.
I have all that data and I got it from the administrator. So.
So I think where there may be some confusion on is the legal invoices that are shared and in the main filing cabinet that would be in an area that are accessible to a large number of staff are the cover sheet and the version that goes before the council.
I requested everything that we had from our director of finance.
And that's what she would have received. When Carrie and Lynn and I were talking, she mentioned she was seeking some more detail and so went through and requested that information and was able to have that available. I believe historically that information has been provided, but then redacted.
Is redacted from the council, what the council sees?
I think so. Unfortunately, because I wasn't involved in that process historically, I can only provide preliminary.
So typically the invoices are about twenty five pages long. And I went through all the last eight years and none of them, except for the ones that were provided this summer, none of them provided any number of hours worked. It would, it would list, it would list like this.
That's like the cover sheet. But then we did procure the background documentation from the summer.
From the, from the summer.
Because.
But yeah, that is.
But the city has the background documentation from all the months. I think that's what the.
Not that I've seen.
Okay.
So we have to get information to. We'll have to go over.
I'm sorry. Oliver and Santiago.
Similar to the Jacobson's invoice, right? So that's detailed broken out by our type of thing. We have that level of detail for the Bond Conway type of invoice.
I did not see it, but I, except for, except for the, what we went back and got this summer. I have not seen that previous, but I'm willing to be proved wrong.
And similarly.
But I'd have to see it.
For an Ansel Glink, right? Even though it's, you know, itemized, I guess we want to go out and have the same type of breakout for that, just in all fairness across the board.
We do, we.
That one does. Yeah, that one does.
Maybe that can be provided just to consistently provide that level of detail for all. Because it seems like they got it for Jacobson, but we don't have.
And most, and I went back and read the last eight years of invoices, not just for Bond Conway, but for all of our legal services and most of them do. And Ansel Glink has and Jacobson has. So, and that's again, why, like, I'm saying, like, I have a whole filing box, which is supposedly everything and every other legal firm does and the one for Bond Conway doesn't. So I can be proven wrong and I'd be happy to be. Yes.
I'm trying to remove item A for Bond Conway.
So let's see, we are in discussion. So that would be a
We should amend.
Motion to amend, to remove item A pending further documentation being provided to the city council members. Is there a second? Okay, Alderman, did we do that right?
Wait a minute, there's already, there was.
There's already a motion.
Hi, Alderman Moreno, that was seconded by, was it Birch Ferguson?
Birch Ferguson. And then we were discussing it and then Alderman.
Yeah, if you want to amend it, then the makers of the motion would have to amend it and the second would have to be corrected to remove that.
Okay.
If you don't want to amend it, you don't amend it. There's a vote on the original motion and then if that fails, there will be a vote on the second one.
Alderman Moreno, what do you want to do?
I made a motion.
So I guess there's a request that you amend it. You don't have to. So do you want to move forward with the original motion or would you like to amend it?
There's, there's a concern that Bond Conway isn't broken down enough.
That it says thirty one thousand dollars of what is, what is.
We remove Ansel Glink's too, because there's no breakdown on our sheet for that one. Yeah.
It's up to you. It's your motion.
I just assumed that everyone could simply move on. So now.
Okay. So any more discussion before we vote on this? Yes.
One quick question. For the legislative charges on the Bond Conway cover sheet, has, have those detailed charges been reviewed by current council and have they been deemed appropriate?
I have reviewed them and frankly, I believe there's a, there are impediments with all of these bills for the following reasons, right?
Go ahead.
One, there is a dispute whether or not the Bond Conway firm should be charging the city for representing Alderman in litigation where the Alderman did not authorize that, right? Second, there's a problem with our bill because as I told you when we were here, we were, we've been providing legal services, trying to broker an agreement before we were hired by anybody. Third, there's a problem with Jeff Jacobson's because there, it was unclear as a part of the litigation if he was really serving in that capacity or not. So the truest compromise is like, hey, everybody, everybody goes on their way. But yes, I did, did review them subject to tho- those concerns.
Did they seem reasonable? Or is that not?
Well, I mean.
Evaluation that you're ready?
Yeah, I mean, everybody, I don't think anyone's making up their time. I think, you know, we were involved in litigation that was costly and was going to be more costly.
I think the fact that his are five times higher kind of raises questions people's minds.
Well, I think some of that includes past due bills that were held for a while. So I don't think it's just, I don't think we're comparing apples to apples as far as time periods.
And we have an itemized then.
Can we have it itemized then?
Yeah, if it's so past due, because like we would like to see from what time and why was over like, why he wasn't paid back then? And why he's charging this stuff right now and why he didn't like charge before.
All right. So that said, we still have the motion on the table. Alderman Dimas?
Yeah, I just, I was just trying to remember. I believe we did pull for bond services on the finance committee, is it a month before last? On services that we were unclear about. And I don't know if that is what you're referring to is what I would assume.
Yes.
It would be correct. Okay. And I believe that was over twenty thousand dollars on that one, I believe.
About twenty eight thousand.
Yeah.
And then after we were appointed, they had to continue to do work on cases where there were like immediate deadlines where we couldn't come in or related to communicating with us on files and the wind down was certainly hers.
But in fairness, they also did work when they were asked not to. There is definitely legitimate cases where they couldn't just drop it. But there were cases where they were continuing to file briefs and stuff where they had been asked not to. So it, it's, it's complicated. It is. Alderman Myers?
Yeah. So yeah, I'm not here to nitpick anybody's bills. I understand this is a mess and I agree. I would like to just, you know, have this be done with. But I don't feel comfortable approving six, thirty thousand dollars without like anything. Like it's just one word legislative.
You have something right here that shows.
Can I charge for a little bit?
To share, call out what that is without character though, just.
I asked if we have that here and Ms. Masino was saying that it's an extremely long email, so it would be hard to call it out verbally here in any meaningful, helpful way. Yes, Alderman of Minnesota.
Motion to table item fourteen B.
Can we entertain a motion to table until we voted on it?
A motion to table takes priority. So you'd have to vote on the motion. If there's a second to the motion table, you'd have to vote on that first. If that fails, then we'll go back to Alderman.
Is there a second to the motion to table? Okay. Let's call the roll.
I just want to make sure that I have it correctly. Was that Alderman Avina Soto who had the motion to table? And Alderman Alcantara Garcia who seconded? All right. Alderman Avina Soto. Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Bibi.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Aye.
Alderman Sheehan.
No.
Alderman Hallen.
No.
Alderman Careto Munoz.
Aye. Aye.
Alderman Dimas.
No.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
No.
Alderman Smith.
No.
Alderman Switek.
No.
Alderman Staut.
No.
Alderman Moreno.
No.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
That motion does not carry. So let's.
That'll be Alderman Moreno's motion.
Alderman of Minnesota's motion to table does not carry. Yes. Follow up question?
What do we need to have some sort of action here?
Well, we're about to vote on the original motion, which is to pay these bills as stated.
Have we completed discussion?
Uh, no. Alderman Bibi.
What I'm about to say is probably not going to be popular with a lot of people in the room. But I think we're faced with a situation here where we have an unresolved legal issue that never was resolved by the courts. And I think that's what council is kind of bringing to bear here. There's a great area we're operating in here. There's a chance that Bond Conway was our attorney up until the city council authorized the new city attorney. The existing city attorney wasn't authorized to do work for the city from a financial standpoint because a council had not agreed to pay those bills when they began work apparently. And Jeff Jacobson was perhaps, perhaps gray legal area, not the city attorney, was not authorized by this council to build this, this city for any of his services either. So I think unfortunately, we're going to have to swallow a bitter pill here and pay for these charges for all three firms and move beyond this. If we table this, we'll be here in two weeks, four weeks, six weeks, talking about why we think some of these things are right or wrong. We heard three different attorneys. We had differing opinions from all of them. I think the court may have went either way. We chose not to take that route. But I think in choosing to move on with the five point agenda and picking a new city attorney, we also kind of agreed to take this, this hit here. So that's my personal opinion.
Alderman of Minnesota.
It's a great personal opinion, Alderman Bibi. However, I don't agree to pay somebody who just says, oh, it's a, I don't pay a mechanic. He goes, oh, I'm going to charge you ten thousand dollars because I, I worked there. Okay, but what do you change? Oh, I work on the car. But what do you change? Oh, no, I was working on it. I had it for a week. Okay, but why? I want to know why. I want itemized bills. First of all. Second thing, what happens if we don't pay right away? And third point, I was voted with a over a hundred and fifty votes to be an alderman. And I don't want to waste the people's money.
We have an idea developing behind me, which I can hear, that we take a five minute bathroom recess and that we print the detailed the detailed invoice. What's that?
For all three and two.
I think we already have one for.
We need to.
We need to.
So the two remaining ones, itemized.
You know, one, one more comment if I may. So I mean, even though we're going to get the description that says legislative, I'm billing you whatever, however many hours to equate that thirty one thousand dollars, right? Are we in a position to argue or debate whether they did the work or not, right? We're going to get a detail to say, okay, I got ten hours, fifteen hours, however many. did the work or not, right? We're going to get a detail to say, okay, I got ten hours, fifteen hours, however many hours at this rate. And that's out to the thirty one thousand dollars. We're not going to know, go back in time and say, oh, on this date, they weren't here. You know, we don't have anything to validate that because playing devil's advocate here because we don't we don't know what they did in that timeframe. That's really what it comes down to. So we'll get a detailed invoice similar to the Jacobson's invoice. But I can't tell you on five fourteen that he was here for, you know, one hour at two hundred dollars. I I I don't have anything to object to other than he gave me a detailed bill. Okay, Alderman Switek.
If we I feel if we don't approve all the fees as stated, then we're going to have to go back and figure out if Mr. Jacobson was is entitled to this and go back into the courts. And then it's just going to keep kicking it down. It's just going to, it's never going to end. I think, in my opinion, as the Mr. Alderman Robinson and Alderman Bibi, if we approve the bills as is, we can move forward. We we're just done.
Okay.
Okay, Alderman of Minnesota, and then I would entertain a motion to take a five minute bathroom break and get and get those documents printed because I I think that it is. I think there's a principle Alderman Bibi kind of referred to where when you don't have any more information coming and you just kick it down the road, then you're just you're just wasting time. If there is a specific piece of information that you have the access to and you don't look at it, then that's irresponsible. And since we do have this information accessible after a five minute bathroom break, I would suggest that we print it. And then continue this. Alderman of Minnesota, I said I would give you what?
This discussion or this, what exactly?
I think after we see the after we see the sheet, we will come back to our discussion, which obviously has gone on for some time at this point, but if there's some new information at that point, then when the information that is relevant, then that should be brought up. And if there's not, then we should put it to a vote. I I I said I would allow Alderman of Minnesota to say something and then Alderman, then Alderman Dimas.
Five minute bathroom.
Would you see? Will you see the upper day? Do you have, we have a second? Alderman Smith. Five minute bathroom break.
In the recording?
Recording. Back in session, giving everyone a moment to look over the invoices that we received and yeah, the these these kinds of, this kind of detail was not in any of the invoices that I'd been given previous to this to this summer. So we'll 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 figure, we'll try to figure out what was happening there, but take a minute and look these over. We'll also note that Bovee V. Gutman is the wrong name. The case name is West Chicago V. Gutman. It doesn't need to have my name on it, but I understand why he did that. So.
Yeah, so there's also a mistake on the on the version that of the corporate bill from the South Florida from July. There's one entry there. The first entry says April seventeenth confirmed with Jeff Jacobson regarding pending issues. We issued a revised one because I did not talk to Jeff about West Chicago issues on that day. That was an amendment for the DuPage County Forest Preserve District, so we sent a revised bill and that amount is taken out off, but we just in the quickness printed up the wrong one.
So you you will notice the the question about legislative. You 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 can you can find that on page one.
So I.
Two, three. Yes, Alderman Myers.
Yeah, so I I'm just trying to, so see, there's one invoice with, let's say, the eighty eight twenty two. And then there's a, it just says bounce forward twenty two thousand nine.
Which page, sorry?
Eight eight one twenty five.
So you want to be looking at invoice number two oh one three four?
Yeah, the invoice is back.
It going?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like two or three pages back.
And then it says it has our breakdown as well, or I think I'm wrong.
Yeah.
Sorry, I still. Or is that?
What's that?
Sorry, there twenty two bounce forward. It ends up on.
Which invoice are you on, Matt? Alderman Myers, excuse me. Okay, you are you on the one, the account statement?
Yeah, okay, so there's, yeah, the account statement that says.
Okay.
Not due thirty one thousand five hundred fifty.
Yeah.
On that one, there's one that says legislative, which is eight thousand eight hundred twenty two dollars. And it says bounce forward twenty two thousand three hundred ninety dollars.
Right.
And so six thirty bounce forward for twenty two thousand ninety. Is that, is that twenty two thousand two ninety in here?
I don't believe so. We have.
Well, those are past due.
Right.
Yeah, so.
But I don't believe that they are, that they're itemized on here.
We're back in session.
We are back in session. Okay. So as has been said by Alderman Santiago, you know, we are not going to be in a position to go back and ascertain if this is accurate. I mean, there is there is some basic trust that occurs in all of our invoices. Whether it is merited or not, that's kind of how we do it. But yes, you are correct, Alderman Myers, unless someone can tell me different. I don't I don't believe that we have the I don't believe that we have the detail for the balance forward from June.
I I assume it would be similar to this, like what we see for after June.
Presumably.
I have some clarification on like what legislative means.
I believe.
I don't know. I don't know how they mean that on their invoices. I can't explain that. I know what the word means, but.
Right, yeah.
I don't know.
And similarly, staff, we can share what legislative means from the perspective of when we're determining where something is charged within our various legal accounts. And from a staff perspective, when we categorize something as legislative, it would be something that either immediately evolves the council or elected officials. And if it's outside litigation that was not started by the city, we can store it there as well. Whereas something that might be construction or infrastructure oriented would be in a separate account. I hope that provides a little bit of context.
I don't think any of us know how Bond and Associates is using it specifically here. I would assume that what it usually means to to kind of and the way you were thinking earlier, what does it not mean? Like if if you have a a specific case, like there's one in here for Kerry Farms, there's one in here for Bovee. That would not be legislative. I would think typically legislative would be stuff that has to do with 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 advising the legislative function, the the creation of ordinances and that kind of thing. But to to be honest, it doesn't really seem to follow that that is the case here because it does seem to mix in specific cases in the legislative. So that's my best take is that we don't, we would not really know unless we actually had Mr. Bond in here and we're asking him. Yes, Alderman Moreno.
If it involves it all.
Yes.
Myers, so the one that actually has the bounce forward amount that you were questioning as well, there's legislative and then there's some invoices that are referenced there. If you go to those invoices, it does say in response to legislative, and there's examples of, there's four pages of legislative charges that are on there that might give you an idea at least as to what is considered legislative from them.
The the pages one, one, two, three, four of invoice.
Yeah.
Two oh one.
It says legislative on it. So again, just for context, it might give some people idea on what they consider.
And that's why I was saying, just skimming through it, it doesn't really seem to be super consistent, but Mr. Bond is not here, so we basically don't know. So we have our information or what we have at our at our fingertips tonight. I guess the question for us is, do we feel comfortable with paying the three bills based on what we have? Or do we feel like we need another two weeks to dig into it? And with that said, I think we should go ahead and vote on the motion that is on the table. Let's call the roll.
Alderman Moreno. Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Bibi.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago.
Nay.
Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Hallen.
Aye.
Alderman Careto Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Dimas.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman Avina Soto.
Nay.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. I mean, I'll be honest, I don't love that decision, but that's how our process works. We talk about it. We get our best thoughts out there and then we then we make a decision. So thank you for your time on that. I know it was some extra time, but we got it done. Ah, thank you so much. We are then moving to correspondence. That's a, that's that that should be a smooth one. What what do we have as far as Alderman Alcantara Garcia?
Those are my.
Sorry, okay. So do we have any correspondence? Let's just throw it out there. Do we have any announcements of upcoming events? I know on Saturday we have a big one. Anybody want to make that announcement for us? All right.
On Saturday, we have West Chicago Food Fest from four P M. till eight P M. in downtown. It's also the day before my birthday, so I invite you all to come celebrate with me there.
Thank you. Anything else?
Sunday, September fourteen, because we're going to have the Mexican Independence Festival in.
Yes.
As well.
Looking forward to that. We have September second, a finance committee meeting, which I know many of you are excitedly getting ready for. And actually, we had a ton of people at our last finance meeting, so those are actually interesting. And there's no tacos though, so it doesn't quite compare with the, you know, with Saturday's events. And then infrastructure, we have September fourth. Infrastructure committee meeting.
Mr. Patel promised a shorter agenda this.
Did I hear you say Mr. Patel thought it was tacos at that? That's what I heard. Okay. Mayoral comments. I want to address a couple of things. First of all, the exchange between Alderman Hallen and Alderman Carete Munoz. We all do have the right to express our opinions. Doesn't mean we should always express them, and it doesn't mean that we always express them in the best way. But we do have that right. In my opinion, listening to it, Alderman Hallen, it came off like you were questioning one of the aldermen in a way that was patronizing by asking her a question and then forcing her to prove that she knew the answer. And if I had been there at that point, I probably would have made a point of order and said, if you want to ask her about that outside of this of this meeting, that is the is the place for it. Now, you may disagree with me and we might have gone back and forth on it. But that's my opinion. My opinion is that it should have been, it should have been done in a one on one setting where you could have had a more reasonable conversation about it. Having said that, there's recourse. If you don't like what I just said right now, you can vote me out. If you don't like that Alderman Carete Munoz didn't put her hand over her heart or something approximating it, you can vote her out. If you don't like how Alderman Hallen expressed himself, you can vote him out. We're going to have conversations up here and oftentimes they're going to get heated because we all care. We all care deeply about some of this stuff. And we all disagree on certain things. And then there's things that we definitely agree on. I think we all definitely agree on what we were saying when we said the pledge. And I will note that all fourteen of you, as far as I could tell when I was watching the video, were saying the Pledge of Allegiance. That's really what matters is what you were saying. And there are expressions, cultural expressions that we use to show respect that change over time. They change from culture to culture from family to family. My dad was a Vietnam vet and I deeply respect your service. But my dad would not have agreed with you on the way that you viewed the hand over the heart issue. It's his opinion. It's your opinion. You both love our country. We we we're not all, we're not all going to see those things the same way. But in my opinion, that's why if we see someone doing something that we, that seems to us to not mesh with what they're saying, then probably the place to start is a one on one conversation rather than the the city council. I I you know, this is a, this has become a public thing, so we're talking about it publicly. But if if I have an issue with Alderman Hallen or him with me, I would hope that we would probably start one on one and see if we can find common ground there. If I have an issue with Alderman Santiago, same thing, I would hope that I would kind of start with him and, you know, sometimes they have to spill over into into a public setting because we think that they're that important. But hey, like I said, at the end of the day, you guys get to pick who represents you. You guys get to pick who represents you, all right? So that's, that is, that's the recourse. We kind of commit to following some rules when we're up here. There is a higher standard expected of leaders. And uh. There are standards that. We all are gonna agree to abide by to be on this. This council, there's standards that we agree to abide by to be in this meeting together, so. That's, that's all I got to say. On that. Um. I did want to just address a couple other questions that came up in the public. Um. In the public setting, i- in the public uh comments section. Um. I need the glasses. There there's, there's questions about the the taxes. About um cannabis. There was. Ex- there was uh opinions expressed that cannabis is not the answer. There was a opinion expressed that it should not be an automatic no on cannabis. Um, we have not taken up this issue as a council, this council. Uh, this current iteration of the council. Uh, it was discussed um. Approximately six, seven years ago. Um. The fact that so many people have spoken about it. Means that it probably will come up here. While I sit. And we'll talk about it because I agree, like. Uh, whether I am for it or not. I am not going to dismiss it without giving people the opportunity. To try to convince me. Of what they think is best. And to be totally honest. I don't know. Uh, Mr. Riani, who is here, we're neighbors. We we talk all the time, like we disagree strongly on this. He's really for cannabis. I'm not. But, you know, at the end of the day. Uh, this is not a decision about. What I personally am going to do or what I think that my family should do or what I would counsel someone to do if I were acting in my capacity as a pastor. This is about being mayor, representing the city of West Chicago and being city council, and so we're gonna find out what the community wants and we're gonna listen to both sides and um take a. A a data focused look at uh these issues. And think them through well. Uh, think through not just the short term. Uh, hey, this, you know, me, this scratch is an itch right now, but also what it, what it will mean for five years from now, ten years from now. We're gonna do our best to think through those things. So, yes. Uh, come on out, like all those hordes of people that were gonna come and comment on cannabis. We welcome you, express your opinions. Um, at the end of the day, we'll make the decision that we think. Is in the interests of our community the best as we can, and if you don't like it, vote us out. Get involved, vote. Run. Get up here and and you have even more opportunity to express, express yourself. You know, beat me out for mayor and look, you get to do all kinds of talking, so I will stop with that. Um, we're appreciative again that you guys are here, like you guys are like. I I I had a bunch of you, it's different people each 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 time, but we love that you're here and that you care enough to be here. So keep talking to us, keep coming out. And um, uh, we've got this commission now. I'm going to ask uh city staff to help me get an application online for anyone. Uh, who would like to be on this commission. Uh, just. A couple of the aldermen have already asked me about being on it, Alderman BB and Alderman Myers, and I think they're great candidates for it. Um, you know, if one of you wants to thumb wrestle them for it and tell me why you think you're a better candidate, great. Otherwise, I think they'll do a great job in it and um. Then you guys uh as a council will at some point get to uh uh thumbs up or thumbs down my appointments, but uh please uh, please put in your. Your your application if you'd like to be part of that uh part of that group, so um. Yeah, more could be said, but too much has been said already, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I was sorry, it's not a simple motion to adjourn. Sorry, Alderman Hallett. Uh, we have um some issues that uh need to be brought in our uh closed session tonight. Um, there are some real significant issues, and this is a time when when closed session really. Uh, makes sense because we need to um talk about uh. Uh, well, they're gonna talk about. The Bovee case for one thing. But there's also um some real significant legal stuff that we need to talk about in addition to that, that uh. That that we need to, we need to do uh. Uh, behind behind closed doors, not because we're hiding it from the public, but because it involves. Issues of uh sensitive uh legal nature and and uh and people's privacy, so um. With that said, Alderman Hallett, would you like to motion that we?
Readjourn so we can go into executive session.
Thank you.
So when we make the motion to go on the closed session, we have to specify the reasons, so it's under. Two C eleven and two C one of the Open Meetings Act.
Okay. That. Um.
I was thinking.
Uh, so uh, would would you amend that motion as uh our legal counsel uh specified it?
I'm making motion to adjourn.
Uh, and second? Okay. All in favor? All right. Thank you.
And usually we get fifteen minutes.
Okay, so stopping this recording.